And Richard's survey abstract number 42. Ryan Family Trust owners, Brandon Miller, prospective buyer, providing for repealer, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Scott?
Yeah, this request is to go from SF1, single family, to multifamily. They're on North Travis to build apartments. Planning zoning board recommended approval of this, six to zero, subject to the staff review letter.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone here to address this item this evening? Okay. Linda, if you'll read B5 for us, please.
Did he want to speak?
Oh. Did you want to speak on that item?
In case anyone, Brandon Miller, if anyone had any questions with council, wanted to ask something regarding it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Okay, Linda.
Ordinance 6203, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman, amending section 12, ordinance number 2280, so as to include certain properties within the R1, one-family residential district at 205 and 215 East Brockett Street, being all of lot three and part of lots four, five, and six, block four, bonds supplement number two, containing 0.392 acres in the JB McIner survey, abstract number 763, May Lou Wright owner, Ralph and Rosalyn Holt representatives, and Preston Trail Land Surveying Surveyor, providing for repealer, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Thank you. Scott?
This is the former Wayside Flores property. Zone C1, the request is to go to R1, single family. There is adjacent R1 property there. P&amp;Z recommended approval of this, six to zero, subject to the staff review letter.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone here to address this item this evening? Okay. If you'll read B6 for us, please.
Ordinance 6204, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman, amending section eight, subsection 5A, ordinance number 2280, so as to grant an amendment to the specific use permit to allow an automobile body repair shop for Sherman Collision Repair in a C2 General Commercial District, O1.2 Sam Rayburn Overlay District, at 1317 South Sam Rayburn Freeway, being lot one of the SCR1 addition, being a replat of a part of lot eight, block 23, and a part of lot four, block 24, and part of the former Hester Street right-of-way between blocks 23 and 24. V.H. Moore Airs Edition, Sherman Collision Repair LLC owners and Terry Moore representative, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed $2,000, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Scott?
Yeah, this is a specific use permit there at the Sherman Collision Repair on Sam Rayburn. They want to add another 3,600 square foot building to go with their others there. This is subject to them putting metal, or it's going to be metal when they start, but they have to bring it to the masonry requirement within one year. And that zoning board also required them to put aluminum and glass doors on the bays instead of just the regular overhead doors. They voted six to zero to approve this, subject to the staff review letter.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone here to address this item this evening?
Terry Moore, I hear it's a heavy question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else? Okay. Linda, if you'll read B7 for us, please.
6205, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman, amending section eight, subsection 5A, ordinance number 2280, so as to grant a specific use permit to allow new and used compact and construction equipment sales, parts, rentals, and service with displays in a C2 general commercial district at 4612 Texoma Parkway, being 2.698 acres in the WF Patterson survey, abstract number 969, and the John Hendrix survey, abstract number 503. MLJ Real Estate LP owners, Randy Vickers, Berry Companies Incorporated, prospective buyer, and Cox Land Surveying Surveyor, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed $2,000, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Okay. Thank you, Linda.
All right. This is a specific use permit for the construction equipment, sales, service, repair, and displays there on Texoma Parkway in the former Havertys Building. P&amp;Z recommended approval of this, subject to the staff review letter, six to zero.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone here to address this item this evening?
Randy Vickers, if there's any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vickers. Anyone else? Okay. This time we'll close public hearing and consider the adoption of the ordinances. Counsel, any questions on these items?
Questions.
Everybody always has...
We were waiting, we looked like you were going to say something.
I have a few questions.
All right.
So, Scott, obviously on both the auto body repair shop, once again, no outside storage of any type of cars?
Correct. That's in the staff review.
I think, I mean, they've been there for years, and they, so they're just adding to it. So they realize that there's not any outside storage of anything that...
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. They've been pretty good about that.
And then as far as the equipment place, that's allowable, correct? I mean, if they're going to park their equipment that's for sale out front, that's...
That's their request.
That's their request.
So you're saying their request, but it's not some...
You approve it tonight, that's what it would be.
So we're changing something.
The specific use permit is required when you have equipment, sales, service, rentals...
So we're talking new equipment, basically. I mean, this, they can't, they can't park the...
New and used.
Okay. They can't park service equipment that they're servicing that's inoperable, that's in the middle of...
Yeah, no dismantled junk or inoperable vehicles, wrecks, tires or parts outside is allowed.
Okay. And then, Robbie, just a clarification on the bonds. Isn't part of the reason why we're getting such good ratings on the bonds is, I'm assuming we still have the AAA, AA, best you can get?
Yes.
Why don't you explain to me again what justifies that rating?
Yeah, so our bond rating is similar to your credit rating as individuals, and it's the, really, the primary basis for the rates. Now, there are other factors that come in, like how many issues are on the table for sale at a time, so there's just good supply and demand that kind of come into it. But our underlying credit worthiness is what, for the most part, sets the desirability of the bonds that we issue, which then sets the rates. And so our rate is a double A rating. It's been that way for several years now. The outlook that Standard and Poor's had for us was a stable outlook with some high marks for some of the things that we're doing. There are some metrics out there that they go by that we have zero control over that without changing, we can't expect a higher bond rating than we have. So we're, I think it's fair to say we're at the highest rating we can get without the average price of our house basically doubling, for instance, the value of our house. So our double A bond rating has been sustained for several years now and is the primary basis for us getting a, you know, 3.07 rate for 25-year debt, so.
It also has to do with the way that we report things and the way that we share that information and our transparency and those type of things.
Yeah, there are a number of factors, and to some degree, it's kind of secret sauce a little bit, right? They don't tell us exactly, you know, how each of those may factor in, but there are eight or 10 different factors that they consider.
I'd be happy to...
Yeah, go ahead.
...spend some time talking about it. There are probably 20 different, specific, objective measures that they look at, but essentially, it's an analysis of both your ability to pay and your willingness to pay. So the folks that assign your bond rating really are assigning that rating on behalf of the investors, not really the city, because their audience, the one they speak to, is the municipal bond investment community. That's who cares what the rating is. Your double A rating is, you know, we consider that very high-grade paper. There are only eight triple triples in the state of Texas. That's a very unique position to be in. Double A is the same as the United States of America in terms of standard and poor's credit quality. So, you know, that in large part explains why those bids were as aggressive as they were, but Robbie's correct. You know, you've got supply and demand in the market on any given day, and you are correct to say that, you know, part of the attraction in the bidder world is disclosure. It's a huge item. It's taking on greater and greater significance every year. It's really, it's all captured under SEC rule 15C212, requires certain disclosures. And now, to the extent that you don't make proper disclosure on an annual basis, and every time there's a material event, bidders will refuse to bid on your paper. And you've satisfied all of the requirements of the SEC rules for full disclosure in the market, and therefore, we didn't have any bidders call us and say, "We're not bidding" because of a failure to disclose, and frankly, that does happen.
Thank you.
Okay. It's restricted.
Well, if either of them else has any questions, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second?
The order says as presented.
Okay. We've got a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. This time, we're to the consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion without discussion unless a council member or citizen requests a specific item be discussed and voted on separately. The consent agenda includes items C2, C3, C4, D1, E2, E3, E4, E5, E6, and E7. Would anybody like to separate any of these items for any reason?
Ron Lael Acock, Sherman, Texas, 220 East Houston property owner. I've been coming to these meetings since October of 2016.
Mr. Acock, this is consent agenda approval. Do you want to separate any of these items on consent?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I'll go C3.
You want to separate C3? Okay. Is that it?
Do I get to speak on it?
No. But we will discuss it separately.
Okay. Since I'm slow at learning, explain that to me in English.
Brandon?
I'll explain it to you. The agenda has a section which you're very well aware of, because you spoke at it tonight, of public hearing. That's been closed, so the next time you're going to be able to speak is when we get to citizens' requests.
Brandon?
Thank you. Well, I have a question. If he's asking to remove something off consent, he told what it was, he doesn't get to speak on that when we, when we approve the consent, and then that one, he's taking off the table to speak on it?
It's Kim.
No, we're not. It wasn't advertised for public hearing.
Okay.
He can speak on it after the fact during citizens' comments.
Okay.
Is this after you voted?
Yes, sir.
Yes, citizens' comments is at the end of the agenda, after the voting on this item.
Can you pull something off the consent?
That's what I'm getting at.
Only one of us can.
Only the council can pull it off.
Only the council can pull something off.
No, the agenda says that a citizen can request a specific item be discussed and voted on separately.
So we pull it?
Okay.
Pull it out and talk about it. So that one's pulled, and we'll talk about it?
Okay.
Well, will it be voted on now, or will it be voted on after?
It will be voted on after a motion and second has been made, per Robert's rules of the order.
I didn't answer the question in English.
That was English.
You will not be able to speak on this, okay?
They can't vote until a motion and, until the...
The question was...
Yes, sir.
Will you vote on it before I get to speak concerning?
Well, I won't vote.
Now, I'm not talking about you.
Yes.
So do we pull it?
They will, they will vote after a motion and a second has been made, and I assume, because it comes before citizens' request in the agenda, that that will be before citizens' request. That's the way it's agended.
Then there's no need for me to speak on it later, although you don't pass it without me speaking. Correct?
Oh, there's no way to predict if it will pass or fail, but it will likely be voted on before you get to speak.
Okay, counsel. Let's exclude C3 for now. Is there a motion on consent other than C3?
I move to approve consent.
Second.
Okay. Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Second, please. Thank you.
And now, C3, counsel?
Well, since we pulled this, Robbie, do you want to tell us what it is that's been pulled here and talk about it for a second?
Yes, I would love Clint to tell you about that.
Okay. Awesome.
So this is an area in the older part of town that hasn't, there's lots of lots that are infill lots, is what I call them, for the most part vacant lots, that have been vacant for a while, and some of these lots have water and sewer that connect up easily. Others, for whatever reason, during development, didn't have either water or sewer close by. In this instance, there's not currently a sewer line on branch. The nearest sewer is on Vernon Holland Memorial Drive, and so they are requesting to get an encroachment agreement within our right-of-way to connect from their property up to Vernon Holland. Typically, we request that they find out who the adjacent properties owners are and try to acquire a private easement, so it's not within the right-of-way. The adjacent property is a vacant piece of property, and they have not been able to make any contact at all with that property owner. We verified with franchise utility owners that there's nothing there in the way, so in essence, this encroachment will allow them to have a private service line attaching to our public line in Vernon Holland.
Okay. Thank you, Clint. All right, counsel. So C3, we have a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Linda, if you'll read Resolution 6474 for us.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sherman, finding that Encore Electric Delivery Company's LLC application for approval to amend its distribution cost recovery factor pursuant to 16 Texas Administrative Code, Section 25.243, to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied, finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Thank you, Linda. Brandon?
Yes, Mayor and Council, on April 8th, Encore exercised their rights under a 2011 law to file a distribution cost recovery factor in front of the PUC. Basically, they are seeking reimbursement for what they claim are extra costs they encountered in delivering electricity, and they are seeking an extra $29,433,804. That translates, should that, should we accept that increase, would translate to a .25 increase in rates, which would be about 34 cents on everybody's monthly bill. Our steering committee, council, has recommended that we deny this rate increase and negotiate, attempt to negotiate some lower increase.
Okay. Thank you, Brandon. Counsel, any questions on this item?
So would we move to approve or move to deny if we didn't want them to get the increase?
Approve this resolution, because this resolution is denying that rate increase.
Okay. I move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Second?
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Linda, we are down to 6478.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sherman, authorizing execution of an economic development program agreement with Berry Companies Incorporated for the grant of incentives pursuant to Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Robbie?
Yes, this is a companion item to item B7, which was for the specific use permit related to the equipment sales there on Texone Parkway. So this is the proposed first award under our new retail recruitment program that we are proposing to give to this company for their agreeing to come to Sherman. They meet the requirements of the program and will generate not only additional property taxes, but as importantly, or maybe more importantly, taxable sales tax that will be generated for. So this agreement would propose to share, as per our program that was approved a few weeks ago, to share in those incremental sales tax revenues for a period of two years.
And add jobs.
Adds jobs, adds dollars to the tax role, property tax role, adds dollars to our sales tax base, so it's a, I mean, this program is exactly what we intended, which is to increase the, you know, the economic status of the city through investment in dollars, in property tax dollars and the sales tax dollars. So we're glad to propose this to you guys.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
What, I'm sure you just said that. I'm sorry. What's the sliding scale on this? So it's five-year abatement?
Well, no. So this one is, this one's not a tax abatement under our tax abatement, our ad valorem tax abatement program. This is a 380 agreement that is a tax rebate, basically. It's a, so it's a cash grant, the amount of which is equivalent to 50% of the sales taxes generated over the first two-year period they're in operation.
They paid in.
So they paid in, and then, once a year, we, you know, we measure it, and then once a year, we will write them a check for half of the amount that relates to the city's portion, one and five eight cents.
That was the question I had when we were discussing this earlier. So we write that, we do the rebate once a year?
Correct.
Once a year?
Yeah.
For two years?
Once a year for two years running, yeah.
So what, I should ask you this earlier, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but what would be, based on their sales, their estimate, what, roughly what would that be?
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
By not answering it? I don't want to, I mean, they're willing to share that. If they want to share that, that's fine. That's somewhat maybe secret sauce or confidential. I don't want to share that on their behalf unless they want that shared.
I don't mind, I'm Randy Vickers of Berry Companies, and I don't mind some general, we expect the store's going to do $6 to $8 million of sales. We have similar stores in other places. That's what our hope is. Two to three years down the road, we hope it's a $12 million store. So you back into those numbers to kind of get to where, and we typically start out with 10 employees. Similar situations, we get to 25 to 30, so that would be our, that would be our plan at this location also.
And Randy, 90% or somewhere in that range of what you sell is sales tax, sales taxable?
It varies widely. We think it's going to run about 80% here. It varies widely depending on sales tax laws in different states and sales tax areas and how much is ag and all that kind of stuff, but in our pro forma, we're running 75 to 80% of that is taxable.
And you plan to be here for the long haul, correct? Not...
No, we'll be here. We don't close any stores down, knock on wood.
I got you.
You know, we have stores in Dallas, we have stores in Houston, and they're 40-year, 40-year-old stores, so we...
And you own the building.
And we own the building. That's correct. That's correct.
Sometimes our citizens will think, oh, well, you're just jumping in for the, you know, tax, for two years and stuff, so I want them to know that you plan to be here for the long haul.
We've spent roughly a year planning, planning this area, so we go to Bobcat, we sell Bobcats. We go to Bobcat, and they said, they kind of gave us an area from Whitesboro to Durant to Sherman, and said, "We would like you to have a store in this area." So we've spent roughly a year going through that process to get to where we are now. And we plan on investing another $400,000 to $500,000 in that building, and then there'll be a couple million dollars' worth of inventory there. So we'll have a substantial investment in that.
Well, we're excited about you coming here. We've been hearing that you were thinking about coming, and we're glad it's actually coming to fruition.
We appreciate your help.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, too, so they were looking at other sites in other communities, and so we believe that...
Did the incentive bring you to Sherman or help sway you this way?
It definitely helped. Part of it is, the Haverty store is a different repurpose of a building than we've tried. So we had some, we had some concerns about that, and there was some other properties in any of those cities I talked about that more fit a typical equipment location than the Haverty store does, but the Havertys does offer some advantages which we hope to take care of. So the incentive definitely, definitely was a mark on your side of the tablet.
Great.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
I move to approve Resolution 6478.
Second.
Okay. Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we'll receive a quarterly progress report from Sherman Economic Development Corporation President Kent Sharp. Kent?
Mayor, counsel, Kent Sharp with the Sherman Economic Development Corporation. Thank you for allowing me to come and give the, my first quarterly report of Sedco. I know we, I think our staff sent the written report to the council, and hopefully you have that in your packets. I thought I'd spend just a minute or two giving some of the highlights and not just going over the full report. In the top accomplishments, I think that I'd like to highlight for this quarter, January through March, we were one of 51 organizations statewide to receive the Texas Economic Development 2018 Economic Excellence Award. There's roughly 780 EDCs out there. We consider this a real, kind of a feather in our cap, and since it was based upon all the stuff that was done before I got here, I need to exclude myself, but our staff does an excellent job. And when we, I asked them to go back, I knew this award was coming up, and I said, you know, "Go back and look at everything that you've done and do, the business retention expansion, all the business projects that we've submitted proposals for, as well as just the operational things that Sedco does and how they prepare." And TDC looked at it and said, "Yeah, you're one of the top in the state," so I think the council and the Sedco board can be proud of that. We submitted 12 new project proposals and hosted four site visits from companies that were, that are not located in Sherman. One of those, or one company constituted two site visits, so really three companies, but one company has came to town twice. Those projects are really wide-ranging, from a massive company that I don't know that we're, I think we've been taken out of the running, but that company was, it was $600 million in investment and 1,200 jobs. It was a big, big project. I think that company is, and the site consultant are rethinking some of their strategy going forward, but then all the way down to a company that's going to employ about 10 people, 15 people, and is looking at an existing building here. So we really show the community to a wide group, a wide selection of companies, a diverse group of companies. We executed, the board approved and executed a performance agreement with Modular Power Systems. MPS is going to invest a lower $10 million and retain 105 jobs. Sedco is going to provide a lower half a million dollars of incentive for that project when the company meets their performance metrics. And then the board approved a resolution authorizing the dedication of right-of-way and Legacy Village to the city for Legacy Boulevard. So that was, those were approved in the first quarter. As far as our marketing efforts, one of the things that I talked about with our staff was I wanted to really kind of increase our participation in marketing. In fact, being more specific, I wanted myself or one of our staff to go to more trade shows. And, you know, it's not, you can overdo trade shows, believe me, some of my peers would travel every month, they'd travel twice a month. I think that's, can be overkill, but it's sort of like, you know, one of the CEOs of GE said one time, "I know I waste at least half of advertising dollar I spend, I just don't know which half." So it's, you got to do some marketing, and some of that marketing needs to be face-to-face with companies. So we've selected three or four shows this year that either Stacy or myself or both of us will attend, just getting Sherman in front of the companies, the material that we have on available land and buildings here in the community. We, let's see, we, Ashton's done a great job with our Sherman TX Jobs campaign. That's a website, and it basically has many, many of our companies listed, our industries listed, and the jobs that they have available on any given day. We recently did a little thing, there was a major employer manufacturer in another community, not, it was not on our part of the state, that announced a layoff of about 250 people. So I got with Ash, and I said... So I got with Ashton, I said, "Hey, see if you can design something in a Facebook ad." Reason we use Facebook is because of the analytics, most companies use Facebook. So she did a really great little, what do you call that, Ashton? What do those called? I'm not, I can't remember what those were.
Posts.
Posts? Okay, that makes me look like an idiot. There's a more technical name for it, I'm sure. Anyway, posts. And she dropped that last, last week, wasn't it? Yeah, Thursday. And I can't remember, there were several hundred responses, we could tell that came from that town. And these are going to be people that are, over the next 30 to 45 days, are being laid off. Some of these people have been at this plant for over 20 years, and it's a Fortune 100 company. So it's just, we're testing things like that, and it's nice to know that we've got a product, a website designed, that we can do a quick response like that. You know, not that we're stealing from another town, but there's clearly not a lot of other alternative for those people to go to, and we would be a good alternative. So anyway, things like that, we're always going to, we're going to tweak as we go forward. Other information, we're working right now on six active projects that would represent a little over $244 million in investment and approximately 1,200 new jobs. But with, in fair disclosure or full disclosure, one of those projects is, you know, anticipates over $170 million in capital investment and would be 400 of those jobs. So these, you know, we're fishing and attracting everything that is big, you know, over $100 million in investment and close to 1,000 jobs, 400, 500 jobs. And we're also going after the smaller companies out there that would be, you know, maybe a few million dollars in investment and 10, 20, 30 jobs. We're not going to be picky. I say we're not going to be picky, we are going to be picky. We want to attract jobs that pay a higher wage and benefits. I think that's where most economic development programs are going right now. They're trying to get more selective, especially when you're applying incentive dollars. So with that, I'll stop and entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Posts. I can't believe that.
Can't tell me more about that Facebook post, huh?
Yeah.
The official name.
All right.
Thank you, Kent. We are down to citizens' requests. Is there anyone here to address the council this evening?
Peter Tracy, 705 South Valentine. I think this would probably be more directed to Mr. Sharp than it would be to the council. But having lived here for a period of time now, one of the things that really bothers me about the City of Sherman is seeing it's like a swath of decay that goes along. We had a mall over here on Texoma Parkway and Highway 82. I spoke with someone that has been here since childhood and said it used to be a drive-in theater, and then I was here when the mall was there and got bulldozed. And now we have Midway Mall up here on, up on Texoma Parkway. But what saddens me is to see all those businesses that grew up on that stretch of road because of Midway Mall, and now Midway Mall's dying. There's nothing there. What is being planned to rejuvenate that? Because when I watch the news, and I watch Dallas news more than I watch Texoma news, is I see Plano Mall is being revitalized, Valley View Mall is being bulldozed. A lot of those malls in the Dallas metropolitan area are being wiped out, North Park Mall. And what they're bringing in are apartment complexes to generate not only customers for those businesses, but residents for individuals. So my question is, is what is in the future for all of these vacant buildings that we have all over Texoma? Because it seems like we continue to build new stuff here and there, but we don't go and revitalize existing structures that are out there.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Tracy. And that's one thing we've been discussing several times, is motivating our developers and real estate folks to repurpose those types of facilities and land. And that's one reason, you know, Ken is working so hard to bring in employers that employ the kind of numbers that he's talking about. And those kind of changes will come with rooftops and growth and development in the City of Sherman.
Yeah, Plano, I think they said it's like a $1 billion product.
Yeah, it's very expensive. Yes, sir. Okay, thank you, Mr. Tracy. Anything from the media this evening? Nope. All right. Council comments. Josh, I'll start with you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no comments this evening.
No comments.
Y'all going to start it like that? No comments.
Well, I want to thank two of our local businesses. Art, I'll probably mispronounce it, Artthropology? Did I say it right? Artthropology, which is on Houston Street. It's a new business, it's gone in a few months ago, where they teach art lessons. And Home Depot, not a new business in town, went together to create what we call buddy benches. And I was invited to attend this, and the buddy benches are going to be placed at the various elementary schools for children who either, you know, feel alone, just out of sorts, whatever, and without having to say anything to anybody, they go sit on the bench, and then the other students are being kind of prepped to, hey, if you see somebody sitting alone on the buddy bench, go over and say hello. How are you doing? You know, and then the counselors will follow up. And Artthropology did the painting of the benches, and Home Depot supplied all the materials and actually built the benches, and each one of the elementary schools are getting two. And I appreciate two of our local businesses jumping in and helping with something that's very important in their school system. So I just want to give a shout out to them and everything, so, okay?
No comments tonight.
Well, I want to thank our new owner of the Bobcat Company for coming in and utilizing one of the old buildings that were vacant. That's exactly what you were talking about. We do have that happening. The council can't go out and have people buy property, we can't do that. But I thank you for coming into Sherman, and I'm glad that us as a council can get an incentive to get a company here. And I appreciate you looking at that when you come in here.
And I do want to just give a compliment to your staff. Patsy is phenomenal as far as helping, and Pam has been phenomenal. So you guys can be proud of your staff, they're very helpful.
Thank you. And I'm proud of Sedco. Thank y'all for what you do here, too. We try, as a community, to work with our citizens and with new companies and companies that are here, so I thank y'all for that.
Okay. So just a few announcements this evening. Number one, the Sherman Community Players last week opened up their showing of Annie. It runs through Sunday, April 28th. I hear it's a great show, so let's get out and see that. I also want to let everyone know that the Sherman Farmers Market will open for the season this weekend on April 20th at the Northwest Corner of Crockett and Houston. They've really done a great job growing the event over the last few years, so I hope we'll do our part to show them our support. And finally, Sherman Parks and Recreation will hold their annual extravaganza on Sa-